We'll call the February 11th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Mr. Cesar is running late. She will join us as soon as she gets here. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and casted on Zoom. Start off with the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions to the agenda, Troy?
None.
Okay. I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Skip the warrants for now. I'll move them in the new second. Ambulance commitment, January 17th to January 23rd, Ambulance commitment from January 24th to January 30th, Ambulance commitment from January 31st to February 6th,
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. I move to approve the following commitment. Mobile home park fee number two, $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? I don't see the red folder, so skip that for... Bring it up. $70 to Attorney William August. Do you want me to read them all?
Yeah.
All right, $70 for William August. The mobile home bill, $5,160. Plymouth, the appropriation for Plymouth County Cooperative Extension Service, South Shore, oh, this is the contract for fiscal year approved at the annual town meeting, May 10th, 2021, Article 29. This is for the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center, the South Shore Women's Center, I'll wait on this. We'll wait on these ones for Ashley. Lexus, R-E-L-X Inc., DBA Lexus Nexus, $74.26. Selectment expense account, $163.25, W.B. Mason. W.B. Mason Office Machine Expense, $299.30.
I'll second those.
Okay. All those in favor, aye? So these ones, we didn't do yet. So when she comes, we'll do this section. Um, so, yeah. Okay, ACO proposed bylaw change from the police chief.
All right, so we, ACO has opened some of the bylaws currently under Chapter 82 of our town bylaws, and we're recommending some changes. One, to update the bylaws, and two, to bring us currently up to the state fine schedule. Our fine schedule doesn't follow the one that the state of Massachusetts has implemented. So if you look at Chapter 82, recommendation would be to add Section 82 dash, I mean, Chapter 82, Section 1-2, Vaccination Against Rabies. And you can, you know, just read the recommendation, which again will bring us up to, in line with the state, how the state has, as they have written. And then on the fee schedule, penalties for violation of this article are $50 for the first offense, second violation, $100, third violation, $300, fourth and subsequent offense, $500. Any violation which results in personal injury or property damage in excess of $50 should be a fine of $100. And also, under 82, Section 6, Licensing Fees, we were recommending subsection D, that no license fees should be charged for a dog owned by a person over 70 or over, which is included in national laws, 140, Section 139. Late fees and citations may still be charged. And then, under 82-7, License Requirements, the agenda fees, an additional $10 fee if your dog is licensed after September 1st, with $10 per dog, after September 15th, $20 per dog, after November 1st, a citation will be issued of $50 and all other outstanding fees for each unlicensed dog. So that's the proposed changes in our bylaws.
And that brings it in line with the state?
Yes, it does. Yeah, because we were charging the old fees. We were charging 25, 35, 50. So I think it just brings right up to what the state recommends and what their schedule fees are for these violations.
I'll move it.
So do we vote to recommend or town?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So that'd be an article at the annual?
Okay, so we have a request for an intermittent family medical leave act. So we need to vote to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
Who made the request?
I was told we can't say the name.
Right.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Notice that, so the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, at 5:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, for the purpose of the transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license from Lily Cafe to Inc., DBA Happy Dragon Restaurant, to Dragon Lake Village Inc., DBA Happy Dragon Restaurant. Cecilia Yusso, License Holder and Manager on the property located at 327 Plymouth Street, Halifax, MA, 02338 Board of Selectmen, Jordan Z. Andrews, Troy Garen, and Ashley A. DeSessa. So that's information. So then we have a nursing agreement.
Yes, sir.
So the nursing agreement is between the town of Halifax and Mary Laurie Montior, the nurse?
Montori.
Montori, thank you, Troy. Is there a motion to accept? This was recommended by the Board Health?
That's what I was wondering.
And then the Board also requested that she be provided a town laptop as well, so that things are kept separate.
I'll move it.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor, aye?
Dear Lord, Mr. and Mrs. Devil, let us...
Representative Winata's aide, Chris, just texted saying that Rep. Winata is running a little bit... So then we have, we, the town had previously put out a request for proposals to sell real property to the town of Halifax for land for municipal buildings. There was a proposal to purchase property for Mr. Keating and Mrs. Keating. Their proposal was for $1,850,000. So this was put out and due to the Building Facilities and Needs Committee. And I think the purchase of the property could make sense long-term for the town. I am not sure of where to get the funds to purchase other than a...
Probably a debt escrow.
Debt escrow, yeah, that's what I was trying to come up with.
Yeah, we'll have to go to vote.
So the purchase of the property would make sense to gain land for future development of municipal services for the town. With the financial constraints that we're in right now...
I obviously have to say no at this time for purchasing the property because we're already in the red. You know, debt escrow's in, I don't think we pass the town meeting.
I tend to agree.
The money that you had thought about using?
Yes.
Is now going to be used for another capital project, correct?
So there is money available, and we're going to have a financial team meeting next week with the bond?
Yeah, the folks that hold them and representatives from several departments?
Yes.
Regarding that?
So there's a possibility of using the previous bond for the elementary school to fund a purchase like this or to fund?
The council on agent.
The council on agent. Sorry, I'm drawing blanks today. It was a long meeting last night. So I think that we need to vote on this. I know, Chief, you've been at those meetings. If we had the money, would you support this purchase?
The 265, my deposit?
Yeah.
The one that, yeah, well, definitely, yeah. I think, you know, for the long term, I mean, to look in the head, you know, try to place ourselves in a better position. If we're, you know, down the road, go ahead with a municipal, you know, complex, we would need land. I was, I know Chief Ferris is kind of taking the lead on this, and I had a conversation with him the other day. There's a, another piece of land close by, and I don't know much about it. I haven't had a chance to talk to Holly, which is owned by Cumberland Farms, so where the butts, where Cumberland Farms sits right now, not across the street, it's the same side of the street. It's, I was looking at the thing, and it is owned by Cumberland's Incorporated or whatever. I don't know what the acreage is. It looks like it'd be, you know, enough if, but again, it'd be another avenue.
RFP.
Yeah, but, and I don't even know, like, the condition of the land, if it's like wetlands. At first, somebody had mentioned they might have been actually septic for the housing development there, but it's not. Their septic is the rear of the property, so I tried to get a picture of it on Google Maps, but I couldn't get my printer to work, so. But I'll follow it up to kind of get an idea of the size of the property and everything else.
Okay. What's the address?
I think it's Zero Plymouth. On the map, it's...
It doesn't have an actual address, so it's...
I mean, whereabouts is it located?
So, you know, the Cumberland, yeah, 58 and 106?
To the left of the Cumberland Farms.
Right, to the left of Cumberland Farms. If you're facing Cumberland Farms, it's like a, it's an area there.
Right. I know exactly where.
Yeah.
So you made a motion. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that was to not accept the offer?
So we have a capital plan for surveillance cameras. So this is going to be submitted to Capital Plan, the surveillance cameras. So Cecil was providing us that information. So we're going to skip the alternative until Ashley gets here. So I think we need to vote to open the annual town meeting warrant?
Yeah.
So I make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant for May 9th, 2022?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do you want to set a date to close the warrant for the annual?
Yeah, how long do you usually leave it open?
Couple of weeks.
Do you want to do our meeting in March? Do you want to do March 22nd?
Is there any committee meetings that are going to meet between the time you open it and you close it?
Well, we should get all the capital articles from Capital Plan, and it needs to be open for all the petition articles I do by March 1st. So do you want to say March 22nd?
That's good.
Okay. So I make a motion to close the annual town meeting warrant on March 22nd.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And I will make the motion to open the special town meeting warrant today and to close it on March 22nd as well?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Hmm.
Good.
Good.
Ambulance abatements, January 22, 2022, I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have a status report. So we have a status report from the Municipal and School Building Committee, current building project status. The elementary school is scheduled for food warmer. LED lights have been installed. Hope's Tavern. Oil tank is shifting in the dirt cellar. Will pour concrete pad to place the tank on it. Window replacement starts January 19th, 2022. And recycling sensor bottom of the metal building is rotting out. Looking to repair and replace for price. We have got a talent bank form for Pam Enstrom for the fireworks committee. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Ed, we've got your report.
Just a couple of items, basically, to publicize again the ethics training seminars that we have scheduled for next week. One will be held on Tuesday the 15th at 9:00 in the Great Hall, and then a second training session will be held Wednesday, February 16th, at 6:00 for people that are members of boards and commissions, what have you.
Do you want to go into executive session to talk about contracts while Police Chief's here?
Sure.
Okay, so I move to go into executive session for contract negotiations with sergeants, firefighters, highway, and mixed unit as discussing strategy with respect of collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and I, as chair, declare it so. So we'll be in executive session for probably 20, 25 minutes? So, okay. I make the motion.
Second, yes.
Troy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. All right, so I'll call us back to order. Senator Brady is here. Thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we have started reviewing the budget, and for this fiscal year that we're in right now, FY22, because of the change in who is able to do special needs out of district transportation, before we had three or four companies, Joe can correct me when I'm wrong. We had a number of those companies that we previously used. They closed up shop or they got bought out. So the cost of the new companies has basically skyrocketed in price to the tune of $300,000 for this fiscal year right now. So we're, we're going to be in a deficit for this fiscal year to the tune of $300,000. The town does have free cash that we can use to make up some of that.
Oh, all right.
So we will have the ability to pay at a special town meeting that amount of money for this fiscal year, but what we are asking for is if there's some extraordinary or some way of funding increased costs because of COVID to fund out-of-district transportation, special needs, and special needs tuition itself increases that were unforeseen, if there's some way to do that in any legislation moving forward. For the upcoming fiscal year, we have an increase of about $500,000 from what's forecasted from this year for just transportation and tuition for out-of-district special needs. And our Prop 2.5 is $450,000. So basically, we spent, we spent everything with just those two lines. And really, that is, that is the reason why I think Halifax is continually in a financial hole every year when it comes down to do budgets with Silver Lake for the elementary school or without police and fire. The amount of money that the town spends on education is more than what the formula equates. And I really think that the formula doesn't take any consideration into what's actually being spent for special needs. We know that we get the circuit breaker reimbursement, but if you have a number of students that hit that $48,000 mark, it doesn't matter how many students you have there, you don't get any increase. It's only when you go above that that we get the circuit breaker money back. So it just seems like the town of Halifax, for whatever reason, when we compare ourselves to Kingston and Plimpton, we have a higher number of students that are receiving services, and our ability to pay is not there. So we, we are in a deficit right now of approximately $300,000 for the upcoming fiscal year, and that's without raises being factored in. So every 1% raise is approximately $100,000. And we all know that inflation is going through the roof right now. Our police and fire are basically, when compared to the surrounding towns, they can leave to go to a surrounding town and make a substantial increase in money. And it, it really seems like it's, when you look at what we're spending for tuition and transportation, we're spending almost $3 million on special needs. And that doesn't include the offset that we, Marie can correct me if I'm wrong on this one. We take the circuit breaker reimbursement number, we factor that in, so that's not even including the circuit breaker number. So I think it was 450, 474,000, someplace in there? So that, so that's an addition. So we're really spending $3.5 million out of 14.9 on special needs. So really...
I know the governor is increasing in his budget. He increased the circuit breaker by like 41 million. I don't know what the breakdown is per town, but it doesn't sound like it covers.
Do you know what the percentage of this, the percentage reimbursement is?
No, no, I know he increased it. He increased it by 41 million statewide.
So...
Still small.
Yeah. I don't know what, you know, Desti handles, you know, doling out the money, and I don't know, I don't know how that works.
So when you, when you look at this sheet here, which is the FY23, Chapter 70, Aforestation of Local Contributions Across the School Districts, the sheet here, it splits up Halifax's formula to what Halifax Elementary should be and what Silver Lake should be. So another aspect of legislation that would be helpful to the town would be that the Chapter 70 formula would break out the Chapter 70 aid per town. So it used to do that up until 2007, 2006, 2007 timeframe. It was broken up per town. And right now, it's just a lump sum that's given to Silver Lake. So it comes off the top, whereas the town of Halifax should be receiving around 44% aid. Kingston should be getting around 33%, and Plimpton's supposed to be getting 25%. So our proportionality, you know, drops as theirs rises up. So again, that's, that's one of the issues that constantly is affecting the town's ability to pay. I've been saying to Silver Lake for at least 12 years that the budget's unsustainable the way it's moving forward because our town can... because our town can, can never afford the increases that have to happen for the seventh or twelfth grade program.
We, and we only have, our revenue income is the homes. Because we only have to be business in town to bring some cash.
Right.
So it falls on the taxpayers.
So that, there's not really a lot of development opportunity in town. The town paid for a study maybe ten years ago. And basically, they, the study came back and said, pick up the town, move it next to the highway, and you might be able to, you might be able to increase revenue. So I, I guess I'm asking if there's any way that you would support an increase in special needs tuition or, or transportation cost, mostly transportation, so that the town is, is able to pay its bills and be able to afford the services necessary for all its students and, and all its residents. Because, because if we have to cut three hundred thousand, we're going to decimate the elementary school because police, fire, highway, they're all at minimum staffing, the town hall is at minimum staffing. So the, the largest budget that we have left is the elementary school. And.
Can you tell them we're closing our, we potentially could be closing our budget this year at the elementary school with a deficit?
Yes, we've covered that. So.
So you're talking, you're talking basically grades.
K through six.
Across the street.
My K through six across the street and seven to twelve is in Silver Lake.
Yes.
And I don't mean to speak to you in, in, in a way that maybe, you may already know this, but with the way that our regional agreement is set up, is the three towns have to vote our budget. So oftentimes, what, oftentimes what happens to us in Halifax is Kingston and Plimpton will approve the budget for Silver Lake and Halifax won't, but we don't have a choice because they've already approved it. So then, we're bound to pay, but they've approved up here. Unfortunately, we have to cut in our town to meet the Silver Lake number. And to Gordon's point, with everything already at minimal staffing and the operating budget for the town so strapped, the only place that we have to cut is the elementary. And because we're already tight right now and looking at a deficit coming out of this fiscal year. Uh, I lost my train of thought. Oh, the conversation on the table is, is staffing, and it's over eighty percent of our budget. And so now we're coming out of this pandemic where our kids need more support than ever on a personal one-on-one basis. And we're striving even to meet, meet that. We've already gone through years where we've cut powers that were paid for by grants that were continuing to be funded so that we had to let them go because we didn't have the money in our budget. So now it just is compiling to the point where we can't, you know, COVID really has not only hit our kids, but you know, we can, sure Marie can speak more to the fact that it's, it's the, the transportation that's burying us because a lot of these smaller companies went out of business. They couldn't, they weren't sustainable through the pandemic, and so our pool to choose from is so much smaller. Consequently, the cost is more.
Yeah, well, if you don't have competition.
Right, and so we, we don't have a choice but to pay that. So unfortunately, what happens is like our regular day kids suffer and things get cut, like the arts programs. Like we would love to, we've been trying to add vans to our elementary school for years, and we simply cannot because, and, and not only can we not add things that we want for our kids, but we're starting to cut some of these programs that are considered not
Essential.
Essential, thank you.
So just numbers, this fiscal year, we had budgeted four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for the transportation. For the upcoming year, we're going to budget seven hundred and ninety thousand. So that, I mean, if you're going to point to one place in our budget where we are hurting, it is the transportation. And I don't know if the superintendent or Christine or Marie would like to.
I, I would agree that transportation is an issue not only in special education, but even just from a regional school district's point of view, transportation in general, the lack of competition, the lack of vendors. It, it creates a, a problem, a lack of opportunity for us, and it really limits other areas that we would like to be focused on.
Is most of the tran, most of the transportation costs involved Halifax, the Silver Lake?
No.
Or is that covered, is, is that covered regionally, the transportation?
So regionally, transportation is a requirement for all students. Then some students, as part of their educational program, also are entitled to transportation, whether it be to a program within our district. And then we have students who are entitled to, or have to attend programs out of district because of their particular needs.
Yeah.
And if you, can I just add to that, if there are any special circumstances, for example, if there's a student with a wheelchair, and then we need to search for a van that has the capacity to take on a wheelchair that is far more expensive than looking for transportation from point A to point B for a regular special education van.
And I think one thing that people sometimes don't realize is that a non-regional school district, if they find themselves in trouble with transportation, can pass that cost on to people to ride the bus. A regional school district can't charge for students to ride the bus. Am I correct in that, Christine?
Correct, and then the other side, some to get a partial reimbursement for that.
Yeah.
A regular school system can charge for students to ride the bus?
Yes.
Under certain, certain circumstances?
Certain age groups, that you know.
And, and the distance away from, like, if you're within two miles.
If you're over two miles, you might have to pay if a school district is finding it difficult to sustain their, their transportation. And you're not early elementary, for example, like kindergarten students, a lot of school districts. Maybe I've only ever worked in the regional school district, so I can't give a certain one. From my own children's perspective, they live more than two miles from your school, so I had to pay for them to be transported to school.
Yeah, some school districts, it's the opposite, if you're over two and a half miles, two miles, they'll be part of the public school budget, and they don't have to pay them to get a bus. They just can charge the kids to, to regular companies like that for students in Rockland.
Yeah, I misspoke, it was under two miles, not over. I was just under two miles and I wanted them to ride the bus, so I think that makes sense, so we're interested.
Thank you, Rep. Winatroyd for coming.
Do you have any paperwork to give to the representative?
Thank you.
And if you wanted to, I don't want to leave, I teach to make you repeat.
Sure, sure. That's okay. So for the current fiscal budget that we're in right now, we're in a deficit of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. And it's largely because of the out of district special needs transportation. We had a, a number of companies that we were using, either they closed their doors, they got bought out, and the costs have skyrocketed. So for this current fiscal year, we had budgeted four hundred and seventy-three, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That cost increased approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So if there's any way that there could be legislation for an increase in aid to, to cover the increased cost of special needs transportation for this fiscal year, we would ask you to try to implement something to cover that cost. And it really has to do with the effects of COVID, where those companies either closed their doors, they got bought out, they can't find drivers, the cost of drivers has gone up, they can't get vans, those costs have gone up. And for the town of Halifax, we, we have a, a high number of students that need this transportation. So it's.
Do you have a magnitude percentages or? Is it in here?
I, I don't know the percentage of students, maybe Marie could give you that offline.
The percentage of students requiring transportation?
Yes.
Percentage compared to the other communities or? That would be helpful, actually, if you have that, that would be very helpful. That I don't have online, but I'm just trying to clarify the question. I do want to give just maybe just a point, a specific example.
Sure.
So one of our previous vendors was able to transport a student with a wheelchair that required special transportation, which is a particular van, at a cost of two hundred and thirty dollars a day. And they are no longer able to take on that route. And in our search to find another vendor that could appropriately transport the student, we are now paying six hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Wow.
For just this one.
Is that student being transported to the elementary school or to another school?
To another.
To another school, and where is that school?
I hesitate to get into too many specifics.
Can you make mileage?
It's, it's not local.
It's not local?
Yeah, so still in the South Shore area.
Right, okay. Understood, thank you.
Thank you for that.
So superintendent, Marie and Christine might be able to give you more information.
Thank you.
No, it's not to hold it up, it's just I don't think that we can publicly state some of the information. But, but I think the information that they have would be very useful in trying to convey the information to your colleagues at the State House to say, this is the situation that we have here. And, and I, when we went through Silver Lake's budget last night, there was an eighty thousand dollar increase for a special need transportation there, which is, is going to Silver Lake, correct? That, that.
Yes, that is to go to Silver Lake, yes.
So I mean, that, that's a large increase just to go to Silver Lake from our three towns. So you, you might find support from, you know, your colleagues that if they looked into the issue, there is a large increase.
I'd love to say to my, have you spoken to anyone up there?
Not yet.
I haven't either.
I do have a question, as Frau you mentioned, one of the vendors doesn't transport a student, can you elaborate? How many vendors do you have in Halifax for transportation?
Our, our main vendor is Vanpool, but in addition to that, we use Northland, Mass Quality, Green Taxi, VHS, Responsive Trans aboard, Fox Transportation, we, we use whoever we can find. Our first go-to is Vanpool, they're local, they're in Duxbury, they're actually throughout Massachusetts, but they have a local office in Duxbury. We've worked with them, collaborated with them for a very long time. They can't always take a hundred percent of our, our student transport needs, so that we do look to other resources. And they are more expensive. And again, as Gordon said, we were really in a bind this year when Vanpool reached out to us and said that they couldn't, they didn't have enough drivers to meet all of our routes. And that led us to reaching out to every other local transportation company in the area.
That's an unfortunate problem with all transportation, you know, it's crazy.
I have a feeling this should, this is probably widespread, it's not just increasing here. It has to be everywhere.
It just seems like because of the number of students that Halifax has, it's hitting us probably harder than some other communities.
It would be interesting, I'll reach out to my colleagues and see if they have any solutions or where they'll stand in their increase in transportation.
Okay.
And we're going to collaborate with our colleagues, as Rep. Winatroyd mentioned, but also, I know the first batch of the COVID money, you know, the target didn't get beat out, of course, it was based on a lot of factors, Brockton was the second highest in the Commonwealth of Town deaths in case of COVID, especially with our nursing homes and assistive living. But why I bring it up, the county is applying for more money, and I don't know if there's any criteria because some of the issues here may be COVID related.
Yes.
If we can utilize, of course, that's, it's all going to be COVID related to utilize that money, but I know the county is applying for some more money.
Okay.
I'll find out, you know, I'm happy to talk to Treasurer Tom McBride and the county commissioners to see, you know. We'll try to reach out to any resource, you know.
I think we appreciate any help that you guys can offer. So that's for, for this current fiscal year, Rep. Winatroyd. For the upcoming year, we have the same issue. So we, we have approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per Prop two and a half. We have approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in excess capacity, and we have new growth of maybe sixty-five thousand. So, you know, that's approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in, in money available. We've got six hundred thou, or five hundred thousand dollars just for out of district transportation and tuition. We've got our Silver Lake, so I, I guess another issue to bring up right now is the way the chapter seventy formula works for Silver Lake is that it's a lump sum that's sent to Silver Lake, and it's not broken out and apportioned by town. If you look at the FY twenty-three apportionment of local contributions across the school districts, this, this one here, it, it breaks out that, you know, the town should be getting, if, if you take the foundation budget for Silver Lake, which is the six million nine hundred seventy-five thousand number, and it gives us the required contribution, it, it doesn't, when the formula is split out, if you just take the, the foundation budget minus the required contribution, it would give us the chapter seventy-eight that's actually in the formula, but it's not apportioned out. Because the, it takes, they'll take the foundation budget from Halifax, from Plimpton and Kingston, and that's how they get the foundation budget for Silver Lake. And then you take the net minimum contribution for all three towns, and it's a lump sum that goes to Silver Lake. If it was broken up by town, you would, the town of Halifax would be getting approximately forty-four percent aid. Kingston will get a third.
Yeah.
Plimpton will get twenty-five percent. So when it all comes together, Halifax gets, you know, credit for a third when we really need forty-five percent. And, and it just makes the equation when it's dibbied out based on enrollment that Halifax can't, every year, I've been saying for the twelve years that I've been involved, the budget's unsustainable. And it's the formula changed approximately year two thousand and seven, where it used to split it out. And now it doesn't split it out, and now Halifax is always saying, we can't afford this.
How long ago did that change?
Two thousand and seven.
Okay.
And, and that looks like that's when the formula was updated.
Yeah.
But it really doesn't take into, into account the regional schools. Because of the way that we're separated, because we have K to six, it, it just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't give the town the appropriate aid that it needs credit for when it's come, it's time to pay the bill. So last night, Silver Lake had their meeting, Christine.
I just wanted just a little clarification, as you're mentioning that, that is true, the minimum contribution is done per town, but the chapter seventy is where it's just one big, one collection of funds that we get paid from the three towns. So we just apply that as one total amount, and it applies equally to everybody, so that's, whereas the minimum contribution does separate out by community.
Okay.
As we compute the assessments.
So the, so the increase, so the change is four hundred and eighty-two thousand, right, for, for chapter seventy for Silver Lake? That's the increase, so that is just one lump sum that goes to Silver Lake?
It's one lump sum that's applied at the very beginning of our formula.
You need that to apply forty-four, forty-five percent around there instead of one there, okay.
Yeah, because that's Gordon's take, is that it's, we apply it as one lump sum so it gets applied equally, but it's really not intended as one lump sum. It's Halifax as a different portion, Case as a different portion, and Plimpton as a different portion.
Right, thank you.
So, so if that equation happened, every dollar increase above the net minimum or above the foundation, it would be above the foundation, would be applied based on how we can actually afford to pay. Because it would be based on the enrollment at that point in time.
And how is Halifax's enrollment, has it increased?
So the enrollment overall, so the enrollment overall at, at Silver Lake went down thirty-two students. We went, Halifax went down six, Kingston went down nine, and Plimpton went down 16.
Oh, I have them going up 41. Oh, your talking's lovely, okay.
So when you look at the net minimum contributions, Halifax goes up by $243,000, Kingston goes up by $200,000, and Plimpton is minus $143,000. So Plimpton and Kingston are like, we can afford the budget, we're gonna vote at a town meeting.
Yeah.
Because they can.
Right.
And Halifax is going, uh, $243,000 per prop two and a half is $450,000. That's, it would have been an issue for the town even without a massive increase for special needs, but it's just exacerbating the issue.
How does the total enrollment differ for each town?
Percentage-wise? Kingston's 57%-ish, Halifax is 30, and Plimpton's the balance, 12, it's 12.1 something, I think. So there is a varying of degree of enrollment between the three towns.
So at the elementary school, it was 615 last year, it's 604 this year. So it's it's really, we need some sort of change to the Chapter 70 formula to give the town credit.
And it's regional, it's the regional.
Yeah, and then some help with out-of-district special needs transportation as well for this in next fiscal year. I don't know if the superintendent has any other thoughts about why we have our legislative delegation here, any other issues that besides just this.
Do we have enough time?
I think obviously the biggest obstacle for all of our schools in terms of, it's a big obstacle is the transportation issue. And I have to believe that this is, it may not have the same impact that it's having on Halifax, but it certainly is an issue for regional schools. It was an issue for regional schools throughout the pandemic.
Yes.
And it may get, even beyond pandemic, it's an issue because we don't get full reimbursement. And then we add to that the disappearance of availability of drivers and companies. And it really creates an inflated cost for our schools.
And the bad news is, we don't see that changing anytime soon. That's, you know, unfortunately, something we can't control. Right, okay, thank you. So transportation, Chapter 70, got it?
Yeah.
I'm sure you're gonna take, we've just heard it to heart, and do the best you can as far as assisting us in what we need. But it's not, we needed today, we needed yesterday and the day before. This is gonna continue to be an obstacle. It takes away from the educational process too, because you've been concerned about getting the individuals to the place they need to be. And you take $5 for a ride and a buck for a book. So it's, it's important.
Well, and I don't think you were here for the part where we talked about, we really don't have anywhere to cut anymore, except for elementary. We're minimal staff everywhere in this town.
Yeah.
And to cut at elementary right now, just, that's not what the kids need at all. And we were hitting a point for a little bit of time there where they were scrambling for subs because of COVID, and you have to stay out, or this one's sick, or this one's kid's sick. Sort of pull teachers away, it's really gonna put our kids in a situation with this whole COVID.
Yeah, that could come up with the high school too. You know, I think it's the whole school system. And it's, you know, we're not unique to anyone else through the Commonwealth, unfortunately, revolving through Halifax. But we will, you know, bring this back and see what we can come up with for you. And we'll work together as well, we have the Senate and the House.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Just for the town, I mean, we're projected to spend $14,900,000 on, between the schools. And basically, when you look at the foundation budget combined across, it's saying that we should be at $14,155,000. So it just seems like we do have a large portion of students within the special needs category that is not being addressed by the Chapter 70 formula. I'm not sure how to gather that data to help come through, because it doesn't seem, and maybe staff for Silver Lake, is there a way to compare the number of enrollments and the cost across the state? Is there any system that you guys have to input that data into?
I would imagine that Desi may have some
access to that.
Okay. Because it would seem like if you had the data for the number of students being serviced by each town, and the cost associated with that, again, it might make, you know, colleagues be able to jump on certain increases for their community towns.
There is cost per pupil data available on Desi's profile stage.
But it doesn't, it's the total enrollment.
Right.
Not.
Doesn't give you the detail like you're looking for.
Yeah.
But that, all of that kind of data is spent to the Department of Education, through our data specialists in each school, so I believe they must have that kind of access to that.
I truly want to thank both of you and your staff for coming in and listening to us and trying to help us with.
Well, we'll definitely be in touch. Can I see?
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you all for that time as well. I'll leave the breadcrumbs out so you find them. If they fail, but you retire, let us know so we can have a party for you.
We're not, we're not gonna let them.
That's not happening anytime soon.
He's still ours for one.
We're hoping, as the numbers, for now, are going down, we'll get back to somewhat normalcy, it's been crazy, you know. We're gonna have a lot of changes, even though we're up for reelection, but some of our colleagues in the House and the Senate have moved on, they're either fighting for other seats or they're just moving on to other agendas, you know. Like Claire Cronin.
I was just gonna say, Ireland.
Claire was a majority lady, which was great benefit to us, and she's very close, like family, but she, you know, was grew up too, she was invested, Alice, we lost a powerful spot in that seat. And so our friends, all of the social alike, the different seats outside of there, seats, uh, Senate seats, so.
You're on your agenda.
The only, the only good news is, Rep. Nakra and myself are gonna be getting more seniority, but I'm still old enough.
Just because I color my hair. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that Paula? Thank you, Paula.
Oh, she was on too?
Yeah.
I was like, what?
Big brother, big brother that we're watching.
Yeah.
Mr. Marbles? I think it's important to thank all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank all of you here too.
Thank you for coming today.
I know you guys sat in a pretty lengthy meeting last night.
Oh, no, and then we were Monday as well.
So to show up today, we appreciate all the work you guys are doing to really crunch these numbers, and I appreciate it.
That is a difficult position. It's a difficult position for us too, because we see the the regional needs, and then we see the town needs, and then, and we also have the balance of student needs. And it's a, it's a strange balance, especially when times are tough. And we're gonna try to work to get there, but I do think that the transportation issue is a pretty significant issue. And I think if that, we can find some relief there, it will. It won't, it won't just help Halifax, it will help school districts in general.
Yeah. And it's hard for, like, myself, Summer, and Gordon, who, and Ashley, who are resident taxpayers, but also have children invested in the school system, and sit on these committees to try to find a way to.
Hold in all different directions, because you have to do it for your child, but when you hold these seats, you have to do what's best for the town and the taxpayer.
Yes, yeah, exactly, so.
And I was $20 off last night.
$20, Gordon?
It's good to have the double check. It's a good thing.
Yes.
I found it by the end of the meeting, it was a tie-off, but.
You just wanted to get up too and yell that you found it, didn't you?
No, no, I was. But I guess I would like to say, I am very thankful for you guys and the revenue increase at the CTE program, and being able to expand and give others an opportunity to come to Silver Lake, I think is important and a good source of revenue, because that was up $125,000. So we would be looking at a much higher number without that.
And all the work Marie has done to keep our kids in the district.
Yes.
Which is beneficial not only to our budget, but to our children, you know, to our students.
Is Paula still on?
Paula, you still there? No. Okay.
Gordon, can I ask a question? When the formula changed, when Desi used to provide us with Chapter 70 per town, do you know what the reasoning was for that change?
I don't. I don't, because I remember having a long conversation with Peg Fitzgerald when I first joined the Finance Committee, and she was like, oh, your numbers are off. She was like, you didn't, you didn't have the Chapter 70 amount for each town. And I was like, no, it changed. So I think if it was broken out per town to the, you know, the foundation budget that's applied per town, and then the equation was set.
You'd see a difference.
You'd see a difference, because when I brought up the spreadsheet last night, so, right now, we are, Halifax, with last night's numbers, we're at 24% over the net minimum contribution. Kingston's at 21%, and Plimpton's at 20. So every time that we spend more money above the net minimum and the foundation, it costs the town more proportionality-wise. And I think that's really part of the struggle, is every dollar that's above that number, somehow that formula breaks down to.
Every dollar above that number is based on enrollment. So it's that piece before that where it hasn't been assigned by community.
Right, it seems like, it seems like that that number above should be the same numbers as our enrollment numbers, but it's not. So thank you all very much.
Just remember, it's lonely at the top.
So we have, we have a few items left to to finish. That's what Jill brought.
Okay, except you have that. Can I take one? Sorry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brand new.
Try to just recess for like five minutes, Gordon, and let everyone get ourselves in, let the noise and everything.
I'll see you later, right? I gotta go down to Providence.
We did the family's committee. But we didn't do the wages. Sounds like a threat.
I know, I know. We're coming to help, we're coming to help hand out the tests and get everybody all set for the test.
Right, there's photos on the internet.
We're just giving back to the community.
How are you, Mr. Aaron?
Yeah.
I'm all good, Sharon.
Good, glad to hear that.
See, you still look just as lovely as ever.
Thank you, I try. He keeps me young, this one right here, keeps me young and skinny.
You gotta run around after him everywhere. Okay, you guys have a good weekend.
Thank you.
You guys.
Thanks for having us.
Have a nice meeting, I appreciate it. See what we can do with it, go do something.
Yeah, if you need anything, I'm absolutely known.
I probably should have done this a while ago, so I'm not going in there.
Better with the number though.
Sure.
We'll see. All we can do is ask, right?
Yep. And then we back, so we're on the asking party.
But part one's.
Part one, part one, we're asking, we're asking nicely with a please.
Yes, the very biggest gap.
Did I sign all?
No. That's what I'm trying to look at right now, see what we missed. These, you signed the top, I think, but not the other part. Do you have to? Now that I'm a singles, I don't even think you, you need to.
That's true.
I'll go with it.
Of course you have it.
You've been doing it for a long time.
Don't say it.
This is for Pam, so let's not mess those up. These will be for Pam.
This should be Pam too.
Okay. Actually, they don't look too the same, so shouldn't get confused with the ones on the street.
So we have some select room bills, Ashley, for you and Tori to.
I have to do the first warrants, you said you guys only did the ambulance warrant, sorry?
Yep.
All right, so I move to a firm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant for $396,620.03. Vendor warrant number 69, sorry, the previous warrant was 68. Vendor warrant number 69 for $79,440.81. Withholding warrant number 70 for $135,883.54. Vendor warrant number 71 for $99,506.05. And the school warrant number 72 for $490,990.26.
Second.
All those in favor, yes?
All right.
I recuse.
All right, so those, did you do the mobile home?
Yeah, we did that.
Okay.
So now you're gonna need to do the select room bills.
Thank you. All right, we got a whole bunch in here, because we have like a lot.
I'm just gonna excuse myself real quick while you guys do that.
I move to approve payment of the following select. I move for approval payment of the following selectmen bills. So we have a law bill, William August for $70. We have a county cooperative extension services for $150. Social Women's Center for $3,500. Law bill for RELX for $74.26. We have a law, a selectmen bill, WB Mason for expense account, $163.25. Another WB Mason for $299.30. KP Wa for $857.50. And then we have three or four months of these, so we have a law bill for Brooks and Durensis for $28,651.64. Another Brooks and Durensis for $24,945.50. And then the final one for $25,765.24.
Seven.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Those are all signed. All right, so, did you guys do the ambulance payment on the bottom?
Yep.
Okay, so that one's all done. So we just have to do the town meeting?
We did town meeting, CBA.
Did we decide to go earlier? The town meeting type?
No.
We, uh, we didn't do town meeting.
We didn't do the town meeting type?
No, because you said you would put that on the agenda?
Right. Um, so we have to do that, and then the CBA, and then everything else is done?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so wherever you want to start, true.
Well, if you guys haven't did that first one, I'll recuse myself.
I know we have letters in here from me. Trying to pull it back up. So she did give us a list, because we asked her to reach out to anybody that had applied to see if they're still interested. Let's go find the list. What was it? That's the list that we had, that she gave, oh, you have it?
Mm-hmm.
I only have this piece, I didn't have all the bank forms. Thank you, ma'am. Oh, you don't have me, that's from the board. I see what you're saying, we had them the last meeting, because I looked at them the last meeting, all the town admin forms, I just don't see them this meeting. All right. Do you have a motion? Or conversation or anything? You want to start? So they need the second associate number.
I was impressed with Marlene Amidi. Only interview with them.
I liked her, I think she's always great. I was impressed by a number of them, I mean, there's only a couple that had followed back through, so out of the three, I think we have left, I was impressed with her interview. I was impressed by Dave Mazio. I liked that he tried to get, he was willing to serve on any board. He just wanted to be involved and be here and be present, he interviewed with us for a couple of different boards. So I think he just really wants to be able to be a part of something, so I appreciated that. Thomas Pratt, I think he was new to the town?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's great too, I mean, he's new to the town and wants to get involved and, and, and be involved, so I mean, I think of the three that seem to have replied back, I think they're all fabulous options too.
Well, I'd like to recommend Marlene Amidi.
Okay, a second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, so now we go to town. Can we get Gordon?
So what's new, buddy?
The dream. Still working the.
I finished lights off of the.
Not that it really changes the light.
Let there be light.
All right, so I think the only thing we have left is discussion on annual town meeting. So it got brought up at Capitol Planning, I think the night that you were there with us, Ed. We were discussing the warrants and just in general, the meetings, the turnouts, we can lose quorum, they kind of drag on, we don't end up getting through everything, we have multiple nights of the meeting. So we were thinking, that last special meeting we did, we had a start time of, I think it was 6:30 instead of 7:00. And we seemed to have, I, I kind of remember, we had quorum a little bit quicker than we normally do. So we were talking about changing the start time, so we can't change the date, the bylaw is what it is, but the time is at our.
So we, we typically start at 7:30 and do the special at 8:00.
Right, so we're talking about starting at 6:30, doing the special at 7:00.
So the, the one issue with starting at that time is typically, the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen are meeting before the meeting to make final adjustments, because that's just the nature of the beast.
Right. But we did that with the special, we met the day before, we made it work, and we still met both times. To be able to hold quorum and make it more convenient, I mean, we're already in a situation where a lot of people in this town can't come, because we do it on a school night. We have parents at home that one can come and one can't, because they're home with their kids or whatever the situation. I just feel like making it a little bit earlier would be good for the older community, for the parents, for, this is my opinion. We're just discussing at Capitol Planning, so I wanted to hear what your opinions were.
Troy?
Early or late, doesn't make any difference to me.
6:30 is fine for you?
6:30 is fine.
All right.
Then we can meet at 5:30 beforehand, to give us an hour.
Okay, and you want to make a motion to change the start time?
I make a motion to change the time of our annual town meeting on Monday, May 9, 2022, to 6:30, and the special town meeting Monday, May 9, 2022, to 7:00 PM.
If we find it, we'll give you a buzz.
I made the motion.
Starting.
6:30 start for annual, 7:00 for special. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We did do executive session previously.
Okay. We talked, no.
And I think, um, that's it? So is there any other?
To adjourn.
In the, in your town report, did we talk anything about the town administrator?
Oh. I need to schedule another meeting for the board. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about having a meeting this Tuesday? So what time do we want to do? 4:00?
Yep, that's fine.
4:00?
4:00 is good.
Okay, so we'll have another meeting on 4:00?
Perfect.
Tuesday.
Okay, all right, so we'll watch it to adjourn.
That's, you seconded, Troy, okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Thank you.